2024 Smithfield Town Council Committees Order, you know, rearrange the agenda just a little bit. We are going to take public comments first, and then after that, we're going to go directly into finance as we have a staff member that needs to depart. The first thing I have is public comments, and the first person signed up is Mr. Steve Stewart. Stewart?
Where should I go, Mayor?
Right there's finance. Should be, if you can pull that microphone over there, that should work fine. Good afternoon, sir.
Steve Stewart, 100 Commerce Street, Smithfield. Members of Town Council, I come before you today to humbly ask that you preserve important history and ensure the vibrancy of the performing arts downtown by working with me to keep the Smithfield Times on the site it has occupied for a century. Selling the property at 228 Main Street to the Smithfield Times is the right decision for taxpayers who would get market value for the property they have owned for the past four years and a nice return on the investment that they made in 2020. It's the right decision for the historic district, which is blessed to be home of two iconic businesses that have operated continuously on the same site with the same name for a century or more, and that's the Times and the Smithfield Inn. As custodians of Smithfield's historic district, it could be argued that one of your highest obligations is to history itself. It's the right decision for the community, which would be assured in a way that no legal easement can ever guarantee that Times Square, recently rebranded as Main Street Square, remains family-friendly, non-commercial, community space for many years to come. The Times birthed that community gathering space nearly four decades ago under the ownership of John Edwards and has continued in partnership with the town to be its caretaker for the past five years. The Times and Times Square are inseparable. The newspaper office is the headquarters of the Downtown Smithfield Summer Concert Series, which will wrap up its 38th season this Friday night. A successful partnership between the Isle of Wight Arts League, the Times, and the town. Concert performers and organizers use our office to change in and out of their performance clothes, for restroom facilities, for air-conditioned breaks from the summer heat, and to take cover during the pop-up thunderstorms that are quite common this time of year. Other community events, community groups, holding events in Times Square routinely use our office. The Christmas Parade judges come inside to confer and make their decisions on winning floats and bands. The Women's Club of Smithfield uses our office to stage and organize the delicious homemade cookies that are served on the night of the Christmas tree lighting. And then there's Halloween night and save trick-or-treating, long organized and hosted by the Smithfield Times. Often here, visitors compare Smithfield to a 21st-century Mayberry or a Norman Rockwell painting. Halloween evening with hundreds, maybe even a thousand, costume children and their parents coming downtown for Times-sponsored festivities. And the 13 Friday evenings that we host summer concerts are a slice of Americana that other towns envy. And I know that because I go to them and they tell me. It's important for me to say to you in the community today that there is zero conflict between me and Jay Hassel, who, as we know from the public record, also seeks to purchase the building. To give you an idea of what a class act Jay Hassel is, he called me a few days before your recent deadline for bids on the Times building. And he said to me, "Steve, if you're going to submit a bid, I won't." It was an incredible but not surprising gesture for one who knew of my desire to own the building and keep the Times office where it's been for a century. Pure class. I thanked him profusely but told him that he absolutely should submit a bid, among other reasons being that the Town Council would have a quality alternative should it decide for whatever reason that the Times must go. As I believe most of you know, my sealed bid arrived after the 3:00 p.m. deadline but before the 4:00 p.m. bid opening on July 31, due to a family emergency that occurred literally while I was en route to hand-deliver a bid to Mrs. King. Had you received that day a bid in excess of appraised value from a reputable party, I would not be sitting here today. But I am here today to confirm an offer of appraised value that I made, first made, 18 months ago in February 2023. That offer was reconfirmed this past February, just a few months ago. It stands today with no contingencies, as well as a commitment to close within 30 days of its acceptance. In short, I urge you to make what I believe to be the right decision for taxpayers, for the historic district, and for the community. Keep a century-old business home and protect the special traditions of Times Square. Thank you for your time, and let me just say, thank you for being a great landlord for the past four years. Special to Mr. Stallings, he has been first-class every time I've needed him. You all have been there for me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next is Elaine, and I hope I get it correctly. Dyer?
Dairo.
Dairo, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell whether that was an O or a D.
That's okay.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elaine Dairo, and I'm a board member of the Isle of Wight Arts League. I've been a board member since 2011. The Summer Concert Series is one of four parts under the umbrella of the Arts League. We have the Arts Center, Smithfield Music, Sundays at 4:00, and the Summer Concert Series. In 2013, John Edwards asked me to join him in procuring and hosting the series. I worked alongside John for 11 years in helping to bring various types of genres to the area. We use very many local artists. I have continued to live out the Edwards legacy for the past three years as director. We have made community inclusiveness a primary goal of the series by providing a wide range of music from bluegrass and country to big band, gospel, soul, jazz, and blues. The series has been able to reach and entertain a broad segment of Smithfield and Isle of Wight's population. John and Ann Edwards first introduced the series around 1987 to bring more people downtown, promote goodwill, and get people to know their neighbors in a universal way that all could relate to and enjoy: music. At the time, downtown Smithfield, I was told, was a struggling business district. I've been here approximately 20 years. Within a couple of years, the series had become so popular that concerts were scheduled on a weekly basis. Historic Smithfield, which was spearheading the revitalization of Main Street, joined the Smithfield Times as a co-sponsor of the Concert Series, which had come to rely on donations from the general public. Historic Smithfield was focused on bricks-and-mortar projects in the historic district, and within a few years, it handed off co-sponsorship of the Concert Series to the Isle of Wight Arts League and as a more appropriate vehicle for an entertainment series. The series has been funded throughout its more than three-and-a-half decades entirely by private donations. Numerous individuals, most of them regular concert-goers, have checks sent to the Arts League to support the series, but several individuals have been recurring major donors and have kept the series alive and financially stable all these years. It has been advertised and came to my attention that the property is being sold. My hope is that whoever purchases the property will still allow the Summer Concert Series to use the stage as we always have for over 37 years. And to add that, the Smithfield Times have always been large promoters and supporters. The Smithfield Times do our advertising, our marketing, and our promotion. So I ask the town to please put that as a clause in the sale and give it a time duration of not less than six years or more if you see fit to whomever you decide to sell. The Concert Series isn't a revenue-generating entity but a human-pleasure one. Knowing how easily something like the series can be eliminated because it doesn't add dollars and cents to the bottom line, I beseech you to consider the cultural impact that it does provide. We start every Friday night from Memorial Day to Labor Day, 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We have at least one concert that is totally geared towards children. It costs us about $7,000 to $8,000 a series to hold the concert each summer, and we have a major one around Labor Day, which incurs a separate cost. We have been so graciously allowed to use the Smithfield Center for that one, and I say thank you. In the past, the major concert was done about three times over the course of 30 years. I have worked diligently to find a cost-effective way to bring two in the past two years so far. Two of our major donors passed away over the past two years, and their families have pledged to continue to support the concert through their foundation. The community loves the concerts, they come out in full force. They love sitting on that lawn and that new stage that you so graciously upgraded. Not to mention, they patronize all the retailers that are open on Main Street at that hour. The taste of Smithfield is within earshot, so citizens sit, listen, and eat. They have dinner locally before the concert. They place their chairs on the lawn in the spot that they want, and then they go eat. The ice cream parlor gets swamped before, during, and after the concert. We have the Navy Fleet Force every year, and we pay for their dinner at the ice cream parlor. As a government entity, we are not allowed to pay them to perform. We had a musical show this year, and the coordinator treated all of his performers to ice cream at the ice cream parlor. Herb Groff was in attendance, loved the show. He purchased ice cream for about 10 of the performers. We have regulars that come every week and look forward to sitting on that lawn. Thus far, the town's enthusiastic endorsement of the series has ensured its continuation, and I say thank you. The art leagues provide valuable input into the focus of the series as well as support of the events, including the professional management of all the funds directed towards the effort. The Arts League board members volunteer to host the concerts when needed. Please remember our mission. This organization is dedicated to the development and recognition of the arts as an important multicultural contributor to the well-being and growth of our community, county, and surrounding areas. Our current existing partnership, the Private-Public Partnership forged with the Smithfield and Isle of Wight Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is called Tourism, and has done so since 2019, and that partnership is invaluable. Also, we love having the Smithfield Times as our partner also. We have an average of about 150 to 450 attendees each concert, depending on the performer. Please do whatever you can to preserve this valuable resource. Thank you in advance for your favorable consideration. We have a big concert coming up next Thursday at 7:00 in this building, and you can only get in with a ticket, and I've brought tickets for all of you. Amen. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. John Edwards? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Mayor, members of council, I'm probably going to repeat a couple of things Mr. Stewart said. I'm John Edwards. I live at 15279 Mills Swamp Road and not a town resident. On October 30, 2019, I retired as editor and publisher of the Smithfield Times. Ann and I also own the property that's been home to the newspaper since 1920. Steve Stewart, who purchased the paper, was not in a position to purchase the building at that time, and we didn't feel we were in a position to keep it. Thoughts of selling it were complicated by our commitment to the Summer Concert Series and numerous other public functions that we had been welding onto the property for decades. When the town expressed an interest in purchasing the property and eventually repurposing the building for public use, it seemed a perfect fit. We're delighted that the town has committed to public uses of the open space and built a much better stage than we could afford to build when we paid for it. Council's changed, and priorities changed, and I understand that. So the town is now considering selling the property. What happens to it at this point is now will have a major impact on the public, and it's that impact that I'd like to address. From the first evening that Ann and I hosted a concert in July 1989, we opened the building to performers. We collected and stored sound equipment, folding chairs that have been periodically used, generally made the building available for whenever public events were held there. Not just for concerts. When local dance studios came to perform for the Main Street Christmas sales, much of the building became a dressing room for dozens of excited young dancers and their parents. Frankly, gritted my teeth a few times during those, but it worked out okay for a lot of people. Steve Stewart, as tenant of the town since 2019, has continued that tradition, and I believe would do so in the future were he the building's owner. In short, the Times building has been a vital part of Main Street's life, including the street's rehabilitation and its rebirth as an attraction for visitors. A lot is said these days of highest and best use of downtown property. I frankly cannot envision a use that's more important for this property than having a continuous heart of downtown's cultural life, which we proudly have made it since 1980s. No business other than the newspaper can logically be expected to embrace that kind of openness to public use. If selling the property to Steve were to cost the town taxpayers money, I wouldn't be here today, but I understand that it won't. That's a business issue for y'all. It would seem that the bidding process has more than met the town's fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers, and now opting to keep the newspaper at 228 million is a reasonable action and one that would best serve the residents of Smithfield who regularly enjoy using the property. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. That's all that I have. Signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in the public which would be heard by the members of council? They're seeing none. We will be moving the finance section up at the present time. Then we will have closed section directly after that due to extenuating circumstances. Ms. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I just one?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
To all our speakers that were out there today, thank you. I want to make sure that everybody understands that the, we understand the importance of the stage and the Summer Concert Series, and that when we advertise this, this property was advertised with the town reserving a perpetual easement on the beginning of that property. The Concert Series is not going anywhere as long as we have it. So whatever happens with the town property, whether it gets sold to whomever, the Concert Series is staying, and we understand the importance of that and are keeping the front of that property for the town's use at its determination. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear and everybody understood that so there was no miscommunication.
Thank you, sir. In my haste to get Ms. Ross out of here, I should have asked the public comment.
All good, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else which could be heard on the members of council? Public comment? Okay. So, moving on now to finance, we have members Pack, Smith, and Butler. Chairman Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I'd like to open the Finance Committee, and we'll start with the July financial statements. Ms. Ross?
Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council, you have your packet in front of you with all the information that happened during the month of July. There's not a lot there because, as we know, that's the beginning of the fiscal year. We're going to start updating the June year-end financial statements once we have that information from the auditors. And I'll tell you that they will be here the week of September 23rd. So I'd anticipate within a month of that, they'll have the information to us so that we can update the financial statements. But right now, we're looking at for the month of July, we are collected $229,838, which is only 2% of budget, which is what we expect. And our expenditures for the month were $461,000, and that's 4.11% of budget. We looked at the, updated it slightly for the June financial statements, and the $6 million Luder improvements increased our revenue to 172.6% of budget. Expenditures went down, went up only slightly by $2,000. But when the auditors come and they make their adjustments, because they will adjust for salaries, they'll adjust for depreciation and all of that, so our numbers will change for June. So I'll jump in and talk about the outstanding debt, and that is 4.4 million. It's not a large change from the last month, but this month in August is when we make the VAC truck payment of $99,000, so it'll change slightly. Let's see, if you want to jump over to the investment part, we can. Are we ready for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So you have your cash balances, but let's talk just briefly about the investments. Right now, during the month of July, we were looking at, including bank accounts, sweep the Virginia Investment Pool at $29,804,000 and some change. Our sweep account continues to have about $15 million in that, and that does include $6 million of the Luder funds. When we move to the new bank, which we'll be doing in the next three months, we're in the process of getting that done. We will have a separate money market account to hold those funds in so we can watch the revenue from that as well. We'll have separate money market accounts for the utilities as well so that we can track that just a little bit easier. Right now, we just track it by spreadsheet, but they'll all do the same rate of return, so it really won't make much of a difference to us. Let's see. During the month of June is when we move most of the funds into the sweep, so that's why our balance is relatively high. What we have earned in the Virginia Investment Pool for the month of July is $35,433. But the most of the investments that we have, that we've left in our, what we call the sweep account, is the one that's earned the most rate, and that's $70,000.
$100,000 a month.
Right. And if we need a breakdown of which fund they're all in, we have taken out some funds and put it into, we took some money out of the sewer and water accounts because they were just sitting there with nothing, not doing anything, and we moved it into our investment account. So that allowed us a little bit of extra revenue with that. So that's where the $70,000 comes from. Oh, so some of the things that we've been working on, I wanted to give you an update on MUNIS. We are working diligently to get the taxes on, and there's a lot of back and forth that goes on with that. They have to take the file, change it, upload it from the older system, then also take the files from Isle of Wight and upload it into the system as well. And we had three, or really two, days of training last week. And today, we spent the entire day kind of talking about some of that same thing. What we hope we're going to do is go live the 9th through the 11th of September, and what we're going to do there is all of the tax payments that we have, we're going to hold them, put them aside, but put them into the MUNIS system so that we will be able to keep track. The reason we're not going to run dual is because we do take an extract of general ledger data from the Bright system, and we don't want to double-count everything, which would be really kind of bad. I'm looking at the contract for MUNIS to change a few things. We've been paying for services that we don't use, and what I'd like for them to do is give us a credit back because we do spend $12,000 every quarter for applications, but we're only using part of those applications, and we've been paying for those applications for a long time. The way I figure is that they should give us credit back, but I have a meeting with the lady that's the vice president of, I think it's called Implementation Tomorrow, and I'm going to redo the contract. But their contract just rolls over, and it's really hard to tell how long it will roll over. So I think if we would renegotiate that contract and only have it last every six months, and then we go back to the table and talk about it, see how it's going. And we do have, not only do we have the monthly fees, which go up 5% each year, implementation every time we talk to them on the phone, and they usually like to go four hours or eight hours, it's $165 an hour, which is a lot. So I continue to update you guys. I'm working on the fund balance. I have almost finished that. I'll share it with Council and Pack and with Michael, and then we'll share it with you guys. That's it.
I have a question, Lord.
Yes, ma'am.
Randy.
Yeah, please.
Why are we paying for services with the MUNIS package that we're not using? And will these services ever be beneficial to us?
Well, I hope so, but they say that's the way they bill. So I'm not liking that answer. I said, "Well, maybe it's time for us to really start talking about what are all the things that we're paying for." Maybe we should go back to the table and look at a credit for some of that. There are things on there, for example, things that we don't use. Financial reporting, we don't use, and there are three or four other things that we do not use. We've been paying for things like tax and all kinds of things that, I counted eight different items that we're paying for that we don't use since 2015. They said they don't usually give credits, and I said, "Oh, well, maybe we can find another way to do it." Give us free service for a while, please. But yeah, I had a little bit of a breakdown in it, and I do hope I brought that with me, but... Yeah, I did not. So yeah, but I can give you a brief overview of what we've been spending for them.
Anything else for Ms. Ross?
I have a quick question. Is there any more thought than paying off loan 8745, and whether there's any downside to doing that?
Hmm, well?
Being the highest interest rate, that's the one. I just didn't know if there's any downside to it.
Oh, yes. We could, but if we look at, the rate right now is 6.3%, and we're earning about 5%. So it's something definitely we want to think about.
Yeah, that's the only one out of it that we're actually paying for the loan because we're paying more for the interest than we're earning on anything.
Exactly.
So I didn't know if there's any downside in the covenants with the loan or anything like that, and maybe we really can't?
No, not really. And two, the rate environment's getting ready to change. We know that the prime rate's going to, or that will change next month. And we really don't know what that's going to be, and that rate right there for that loan is going to stay at 6.3%. We don't know what our investment rate's going to be because that could change one basis point or it could change a lot.
So can we look into it more about it? If it makes sense to pay it off and bring that in?
Definitely.
Anything else for Ms. Ross?
Just a question. Going back to the comment that you made pertaining to what we have in the bank account, the number, the big picture. Minus the $6 million that we have off the side, what's currently in, I think I heard you say it was like $23 million?
Yes, sir, let me pull that up right here. If we, over all of our balances right now, including Luder, is $29,804,000.
Okay.
If we take out the $6 million Luder, we're looking at $23,804,000 plus the interest.
Yeah, the reason I ask is a lot has been said about the taxpayer's burden if we were to, and we're still waiting on the letter, I presume, from Mr. Luder outlining or confirming what I asserted was his desires as far as what to do, how to do, and the mechanics. But a lot's been made about the taxpayer burden on what it would cost them if we were to accept and utilize those $6 million for capital improvement projects above and beyond what he has asked for, which is the wall and the street skate. I'm not changing on that. I mean, that's exactly what he basically said. The brick pavers, things like that. How long have you been doing this job, one way or the other?
Oh.
In finance?
Um, wow, let's see. Probably 30 years?
Okay. So if we were to match over a period of time, because keep in mind, as it will be confirmed, there are no time constraints or time limitations or timing assigned to the $6 million. If we were to judiciously utilize the 50/50 match, in your professional opinion, do you believe that it would jeopardize any type of bond rating, any type of, or put the town in a precarious financial position if we were to do that in a wise manner?
No, not at all. And if we look at the rate of return that we're earning for the Luder funds, it is significant. I mean, we could-
It is what, ma'am?
It's significant. We're looking at, if we wait, eventually we're going to earn. So far this year, we've earned $50,000 on that $6 million. So if you spread the cost of whatever we're going to do with those funds over a period of time, it will eventually pay for itself.
Because I did read in the paper about how much it was going to cost the taxpayer and where the money was going to come from. And quite honestly, it was asserting that it would be a burden to the taxpayers and may even require, as I read, a potential for a raise in taxes, which of course, I think we've had that discussion in the last budget cycle as far as any type of raise in taxes, at least as long as I'm here for the near future. So I just wanted to get your opinion, professional opinion.
And even though when we look at our budget, you know, all of your revenue should match your expenditures, right? But we always do try to find a better way to take and use the funds and invest it and have your investment portfolio grow over time. So if we're really careful, we could increase it by a million dollars, at least $2 million a year. So you're looking at, in addition to what we currently have of $23 million. So that's sort of what you do, and you save your money just so you can have expenditures like that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Ms. Collins?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for keeping you here. I know you only, but so I just want to make sure, because I think I heard you say $24 million for the bottom line. But the way I, because I've done a lot of homework with you and trying to make sure I understand this correctly,
I understand this correctly, our, the total balances is thirty-two seven, thirty-two million, so take out Luder, I'm not worried about the single dollars, but take out the six million, that's twenty-six-ish million dollars, that is our bottom line, available cash for the town.
Right.
Then we're going to get into fund balance, good discussions later, but that's, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page, I thought I was going to say twenty-four million, but it's really about twenty-six-ish million?
Uh, let me, hold on just a second.
I think she's looking at that number, it's worth mentioning too, not all of that is general fund dollars. Some of those are water fund, and some of those are sewer fund.
But not in the, not in the total, when I went over this, not in the total balance, the other accounts is the one I'd spend a lot of time trying to make sure I understand that, I totally agree with you.
Right, it's just worth noting that sometimes when we quote numbers, it's not all general funds, some of it's between the...
But if it's not in that thirty-two million, please, please correct me, because I don't want to make, I don't want to misunderstand something.
No, and that's true, I would say about three million is in the sewer and water funds, and then of that, and then also an additional, I think it's seven hundred thousand for the other funds, so if you said today, if we wanted to go out and spend everything that we can possibly spend, comfortably you could say that fifteen million dollars?
Right, I got that one too.
And that's if we wanted to go buy three fire trucks or something.
Yeah, exactly.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you both, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, any else from Ms. Ross? I want to cut short. We have a couple invoices here in excess of twenty thousand dollars, which require council authorization, we'll go through these at committee, at council unless somebody has a specific question about these today. Anything else come before? Finance? Here or nothing, we will go ahead and close finance, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Laura. We will now go, Mr. Riddick?
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I believe we're set for a closed session for the purpose of the discussion of the acquisition disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to two point two dash three seven one one A three of Code of Virginia.
No move? Motion made by Mr. Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Collins, further discussion? Can you call the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Boblin?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Smith? Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Gears?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Boblin?
Yes, we'll be in closed session until further notice, and get back to this as soon as we possibly can.
I'd like to reconvene the Smithfield Town Council Committees of August 26, 2024. I'd like to order Mr. Riddick.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion that during the closed session, there's only a discussion of the acquisition or the disposition of public real property pursuits 2.2371187 in Code of Virginia.
Motion made by Councilman Smith. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman...
Colin.
Long day already. Sorry, Jim. Further discussion. Call a question, please.
Councilman Hack?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Um...
Okay, let's get this back on and order again. I think the next item we have is the Public Safety Committee. Councilman Collins, Gibbs, and Brooks.
Sir, thank you. I'm going to open up the Public Safety Committee with the starting off with Chief Howe, operational.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As far as the operational updates, you all have our July activity report in your packet. I would be more than happy to answer any questions, should you have any. In recent, also with operational updates, staffing, we have two applicants for one vacancy that we have moved to background. The background phase of the hiring process, whichever applicant shakes out the best will be the one that we'll be considering for employment. We hope to have that, that background and testing well underway within the next week to two weeks. So we...
I know.
I'd like to reconvene the Smithfield Town Council Committees of August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to order, Mr. Riddick.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion that during the closed session, there's only a discussion of the acquisition or the disposition of public real property pursuant to two point two, that's three seven one one eight seven code.
Motion made by Councilman Smith. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman.
Collins.
Long day already. Sorry, Jim. Further discussion. Call a question, please.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Smith? Mayor Bydman?
Okay, let's get this back on in order again. I think the next item we have is the Public Safety Committee. Councilman Collins, Gibbs, and Brooks.
Sir, thank you. I'll go and open up the Public Safety Committee with the, starting off with Chief Howe, operational.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As far as the operational updates, you all have our July activity report in your packet. I would be more than happy to answer any questions should you have any. In recent, also with operational updates, staffing, we have two applicants for one vacancy that we have moved to background. The background phase of the hiring process, whichever applicant shakes out the best is, will be the one that we'll be considering for employment. We hope to have that, that background and testing well underway within the next week to two weeks. So we, we are moving forward with that. Coming up in the very near future, Alawak County Fair, we will be assisting the Alawak County Fair with staffing of the county fair. Next week, as the school reopens on the west end of Main Street, in the mornings and in the afternoons, expect delays with traffic. Historically, when the first few weeks of school, parents are dropping their kids off, picking them up in the evening, it does cause a traffic jam. We will be on scene to try to mitigate that as best we can, as quickly as we possibly can. So, but if you're traveling that way in the morning, expect delays. And that's pretty much all I have for operational updates. Again, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Assistant Chief Smith, he was here earlier.
He did leave.
He did leave. Okay. Mr. Carroll?
What's that? What was?
Assistant Chief Smith.
Mr. Strepluff, he wasn't feeling well.
Okay.
But he wanted to thank all the council that attended the event this weekend at the house. Appreciate it.
It was a very good event.
Yeah, I was gonna make comment to that. It was what a wonderful job and working relationship between Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, Rescue Squad, everyone. See, uh, lots of folks out there, and it really, really was a wonderful, State Police was there. I know I'll miss somebody, but it was just a really, really nice event. Sorry Jeff's not feeling well, but if you would convey that, we're really, we're really appreciative for all the stuff that they do for us as well. So, yeah, thank you, sir.
Hey, congratulations to the Starling family, dedicate Trump fifty. So that was awesome. Your family, quite a history. You've earned quite, quite a few stories. Y'all had stories about everybody. It was good. And then Mr. Carroll, do not see him.
He was stuck on a call. Never stuck on a call.
Say again?
Never stuck on a call.
Never stuck on, okay. Anything else on public safety? Seeing you now, I'm gonna close that.
Okay, we'll go to Public Buildings and Welfare. Chairwoman Vice Mayor Butler, Councilman Collins and Pack.
I'm sorry, I'm still in the first section. I see Will sitting out there, and I guess I was expecting him to say something. Okay. Um, the first thing, uh, under Public Buildings is briefing on Jersey Park grant announcement, um, representatives.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Okay. Great. Cool. Can y'all hear me? Okay, great. So, good afternoon. My name is Chase Pell. I'm the Director of Development at Green Street Housing. We are the contract purchaser, developer, and then future owner of Jersey Park Apartments and Woods Edge. So, uh, thank you all for inviting me here today. We're really excited to work with you on this renovation and this revitalization of the community. So, that being said, so who is Greens, Green Street? Who is this out-of-town owner, developer, coming in and buying this property? So, uh, we were founded in two thousand eight. Our principals have about fifty years of combined experience in affordable housing development. We exclusively do affordable housing. We don't do market rate, we don't do single-family. This is our bread and butter. And historically, these are the rehabs that we've done. So we have focused on properties that are HUD assisted or USDA assisted, and I'll, I'll get into that in a few minutes. But through our twenty-six projects we've done to date, we've either renovated or built thirteen hundred units across the mid-Atlantic. We work in Maryland, Delaware, and Virginia. We have another thousand units in our active development pipeline. We have done just about everything in the affordable housing space. I don't know if you are all familiar with the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. That'll be the main financing vehicle for Jersey Park Apartments. We work exclusively with that project, uh, program. As well as USDA financed properties, HUD financed properties, we work with housing authorities, nonprofits, you name it. So we've done just about everything there is to do in, in the business. Our shop is a team of ten with two principals. Uh, we have a dedicated construction team, development team, finance team, and we also have an asset management team as well. So, in the past five years, we have completed two projects in Virginia. We have another four in the active pipeline and another five to six that we're looking at farther down the road. So, we've, uh, worked a lot with Virginia Housing, which is the entity that oversees loans and tax credit financing in the, in the state of Virginia. Also, I want to keep this a little bit more fluid and a little bit more informal. So at any point, if you have questions, it's a lot easier to just stop and address it then and there. So by all means, you know, raise your hand or, you know, that sort of thing. So, so Jersey Park and Woods Edge. So just for background, I met with Michael, Valerie, Chief Alonso, and a few others at a meeting in March where we talked about our intent to acquire and redevelop Jersey Park. We also met with the, the now current owner of Jersey Park, and we're talking about a transition plan and some of the things that the town of Smithfield wanted to see, which I thought was a very productive meeting and kind of set the, not only the tone, but also the direction for where we wanted the renovation to go. That being said, in that meeting, we discussed how to, the town of Smithfield, Jersey Park is that whole apartment community. But there's an important distinction to be made in that it's actually two different apartment communities that are side by side. And they have two different financing programs, and they have two different kind of trajectories going forward. So when I refer to Jersey Park in my presentation, I'll be referring to the eighty-unit, one and two-bedroom property that if you're going into the development on Ren Road, it's on the right, and that predates the left side of the property, which is called Woods Edge. So it's eighty units on the right, sixty units on the left. Jersey Park is supported by a Housing Assistance Payment Contract, also known as a Section Eight Contract. And it was built in nineteen seventy-eight, and it's comprised of one and two-bedroom units. Woods Edge, being sixty units, is subsidized by rental assistance from USDA Rural Development. So for those of you that don't know, believe it or not, USDA has a affordable housing program. And that program started in the, in the seventies and eighties to build housing in rural areas specifically for farm labor workers. So Green Street is one of a handful of developers, I would say, in the mid-Atlantic that has specialty in also renovating USDA financed properties. So I just wanted to point to that distinction, and going forward, I'll be talking to Jersey, I'll be talking about Jersey Park and Woods Edge as, as two independent properties, because we ultimately have a, a two-phased approach on our hands. So, just a quick graphic there. Like I said, Jersey Park's on the right if you're driving in, Woods Edge is on the left. Obviously, they share, I believe, Ren Road as an access point. So we will be starting with Jersey Park as kind of the first phase of the planned renovation. So that being said, we're looking at a two-phased approach. We are expecting to close on our financing and start construction on Jersey Park here in March of two thousand twenty-five. We expect about twelve to fifteen months of construction, and the hope is that by the time we're wrapping up Jersey Park, we'll then move along into Woods Edge. Now, important detail, when we acquire Jersey Park from the current owner in March, we will also be acquiring Woods Edge. So we are going to take over ownership and management of both properties at the same time. We are also bringing a new management company into the property. So when we've talked with Michael and Valerie in the past and, and just how we go about approaching our development and what we understand about the existing conditions at Jersey Park, we believe, and I'm sure you all believe as well, that a refresh and a rebrand will be really important for that community. And we believe that that is also going to come with a change in a management agent, and I'll get into talking about our management agent in a second. But we, the, the goal here is that we, we really want to rebrand and revitalize both communities, which will be done not only through the physical renovation of the property, but also by changing the ownership and development team in its entirety. So with regard to the financing of the projects, I'm going to give a brief tax credit financing one-on-one lesson here. Most of the affordable housing in this country is financed by what is called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. And what that is, is a dollar-for-dollar exchange of a federal tax credit in exchange for an equity investment. So how that works is that we partner with a syndicator who either creates a fund or finds an individual investor to make an investment into the property, and then they make their return through earning tax credits over a ten-year period. This is an institutional-grade kind of investment. So generally speaking, it's banks, insurance companies, pension funds, that sort of thing. So, for example, on many of our properties, we've worked with Bank of America, Capital One, Discover Bank, Nationwide Insurance. And what I'm, what I want to convey here is that it's an institutional-grade investment that comes with institutional-grade oversight. We do a tremendous amount of due diligence. They do a tremendous amount of due diligence. It is vetted very thoroughly. Our construction standards are very high. Our reporting standards are very high. There is a lot of involvement during the asset management phase of this development where ownership's very involved in the day-to-day operation and understanding, you know, things from occupancy to onsite issues to that sort of thing. So Jersey Park just received a competitive financing award. I'm sure you all saw the, the story in Smithfield Times, right? That was from Virginia DHCD's Affordable and Special Needs Housing Program. So that's a, a competitively awarded program. We were very fortunate this year. There was a lot of competition. It was like, they only funded like ten percent of the projects that applied. So we're very ecstatic about receiving that award. That financing is in tandem with municipal bonds that'll be issued by Virginia Housing, as well as the Low Income Housing Tax Credit investment. So, all that to say is that at this moment in time, Jersey Park has all of its financing committed. We're on a process to go to closing on said financing and then starting construction, and we anticipate starting construction in March of two thousand twenty-five. So we are, as we say in the business, we are, we are close to baked on this, uh, this project. Now, Woods Edge, on the other, other hand, while we are going to acquire it in March, we don't have financing sources fully committed at this time. And I just want to convey that that is a separate transaction that'll be financed separately through some of the same resources, but then primarily through USDA. Now that being said, we have started on the process of doing our concept design, you know, firming up our numbers, getting our estimate from a general contractor, that sort of thing. And as I said earlier, the intent is, by the time we're wrapping up construction on Jersey, we are starting at Woods Edge so that there isn't any break, and then it will just seem like one kind of seamless construction process. So I wanted to speak a little bit about the team. So as I said, I'm with Green Street Housing. We will own both the properties through special purpose entities, but for lack of a better term, Green Street Housing is the owner. We are bringing in Gateway Management Services as the property manager. Gateway has abundant experience managing affordable housing projects, and in particular, HAP assisted projects like Jersey Park. They are all over the mid-Atlantic, I think all the way down to Tennessee and then up into Pennsylvania. They do some stuff in DC, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia as well. And they've been in the business for twenty-five, thirty years, ample experience. They've already started to work on budgets and plans for management of the property, or both properties, I should say. And what's, what's noteworthy too is that while Jersey Park and Woods Edge are two different properties through two different financing programs, they will operate as one, right? So we'll have one management team that oversees both properties, one maintenance team, et cetera, et cetera. Our design and construction team, it's Peacock-Holland Construction, as well as Minor-Fine Scene Architects. So Peacock-Holland has a ton of experience using Virginia Housing tax credits and Virginia Housing financing, which is important because that financing comes with its own design and construction standards and knowing that program backward and forward. Minor-Fine Scene is out of Frederick, Maryland. They work in the mid-Atlantic as well and have a ton of experience in Virginia. And then our civil engineer is Towns Site Engineering out of, out of Richmond. We will also be bringing a resident service provider to the property. It's a group called Communities Together, Inc., and what they do is they provide anything from referrals to social services, to arranging, you know, homeownership counseling, financial literacy. They'll work with local organizations to partner on like, like food access, pantry access. They'll do some degree of programming for, for children as well. So we're really excited to bring a tenant service provider to, to the properties. So I want to talk a little bit about the scope of work, particularly at Jersey Park, but Woods Edge will end up looking pretty similar. So this is a, a pretty robust renovation. We'll be spending about eight point four million dollars just on construction. That comes out to about a hundred and five thousand dollars a unit. And the elevator pitch is that that gets you a modernized community. So that's all-new exteriors, that's all-new finishes on the interiors, that's a mill and overlay of the parking lot, that's upgrades to the sidewalk. It's, uh, we'll be adding eight UFAST units as well, which are accessible units. That'll include an accessible path for those residents to access, our playground, leasing office, laundry facilities, that sort of thing. So, it, it, in a nutshell, that's what it looks like, is that when we're done our renovation, it is going, it will look like a new community. It is not going to look like it does now, right? We'll also be certifying to National Green Building Standard, so the property will be highly energy efficient. We tend to do solar panels in most of our properties as well, which we just need to evaluate based off the, the number of roofs that face south and various other metrics. The other thing we're going to do is, uh, beefing up security. So, you know, my understanding is that there has been a lot of security concerns with the, the property historically, and that there might still be those, those concerns, and that's something we talked about in our meeting back in March. So aside from, you know, an enhanced camera system, we're also exploring access control for all spaces and all common spaces. And then that will also include an overhaul, an expansion of the site lighting in particular. So Virginia Housing requires, I don't know if you're all familiar with how this works, but it's like, like one candle per foot is the, that's the metric that's used. And what that gets you is a very bright parking lot, right? So the, the goal is that we want to promote and encourage strong security, strong safety at the property. That will also come with the process of recertifying residents and addressing some of the existing vacancy at the property as well. So, all in all, it's, it's a pretty ambitious effort. The, you know, the buildings will be not, not totally gutted, but will be, be tearing up and, and rebuilding, so. So it's not totally obvious from this angle in this picture, but this is a quasi-rendering. So we'll be adding these little alcoves over all of the doors. We will pick, you know, a siding palette where either we do one to three colors throughout the community. New windows, new landscaping, new sidewalks, mill and overlay of the parking, parking lot. We'll be replacing the roof. We'll be replacing the roofs as well, all-new appliances, all-new finishes, HVAC system, you name it. So like I said, it's going to look and feel like a totally new property when all is said and done. And that's all I've really got planned, so I, you know, I'm happy to open the floor for any questions about who we are, the project, what our intent is, you know, the floor is yours.
What is your contingency plan to house the individuals as the renovations are being conducted?
So...
How's that going to work?
Yeah, it's a great question. The good news is we don't have to have a contingency plan because we have the vacancy on site, so...
Do you have what?
We have the vacancy on site. So what we did is we, with the current owner, we negotiated and said, we don't want to move these people off-site. We don't want to disrupt their lives. You're going to convey the property to us with a percentage of vacancy. And what we'll do is we'll relocate those individuals on-site as part of the first phase of construction. We'll totally empty a building. We'll complete that building, fill that with the folks from the next building. So the idea is that nobody has to go off-site unless, if, you know, and now we extend the option to residents if they want to live with family and friends and, you know, that is an option on the table. But the way we've set this up is that everyone can remain on-site as part of the renovation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question. I think you answered it at the end, but because I noticed you said a lot about finishes, overlay in the parking lot, all that, and then you went to green building, silver.
All MEP is going to be replaced?
Upgraded?
So MEP fixtures and appliances, but we won't do, like, we won't replace plumbing, like the actual piping. We do have to do an overhaul of the electric though, and we've already been talking to Dominion about that. We have to change, I believe, the load centers and the meters. So that will, the electric will get a little bit more deep of a scope. I think on the HVAC, we're not replacing the ducts, but we'll budget for a duct cleaning. And then we are going to do totally new HVAC units as well. Those will be probably like an 18-seer. That's the current requirement under the NGBS Silver Program. And so that certification, that NGBS, that comes with one of our financing programs. So like, we have no choice. We have to earn that certification by the time we complete construction, so.
Do you do that normally?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm familiar with building systems. Do you really?
Yeah, so actually, most of our projects were, at least were NGBS Silver. We've actually got, I'm working on one project right now. We're going to be doing NGBS Gold with a net zero badge. We just completed a building actually in Ashburn, Virginia, that earned four different green certifications because of the financing sources that we used. And we actually, I haven't been corrected or, this hasn't been clarified yet, but we believe it's the first building in Loudoun County and possibly Virginia to have all four of those certifications, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I don't really have any questions, but I will tell you, I'm excited about this. We've been meeting with the current owners slash property managers on a regular basis. I had been meeting with the residents from Jersey Park Apartments myself, and Amy graciously allowed the community to have several meetings here. Things kind of got out of hand, and I realized that I could not tackle this by myself. I asked Michael if the town would be willing to step in, and Michael, I'm very appreciative to you saying yes. So Michael and Alonso, Chief Howell and myself have met with the current owners slash property managers, and as Chase said, in March, there were more people at our meeting, and I'm wondering, well, who are these new people? And as soon as they mentioned that they were purchasing Jersey Park Apartments, I didn't hear anything else that the, that the current property manager said, because it's not only going to change the lives of the people out there. And just from looking at your website and mentioning, they, one of my other passions is working with young people. This company offers a scholarship to their residents that live on their properties. And in addition to that, it's going to take more than just a physical transformation. It's going to take a mental transformation too, for these residents to be proud of these new surroundings and accept responsibility for what they have. These new owners are willing to do some training. So if this is the last project that I'm involved with on town council, this, I am very excited about it. And I told Chase that I want to actively be involved with this, and I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Valerie. Yeah, you, I, and likewise, like, you know, for those of you that I've interacted with so far, you've all been very welcoming and receptive. And when we are doing our financing applications and sending emails and getting letters signed and stuff, everyone was very gracious and very helpful. And, look, like, I have worked in some towns that are not receptive, right? I've worked in places that don't understand the value of affordable housing and what it does to a community, right? But it's very meaningful to me and to us that you are all receptive and see the potential here, right? Like, we, this place can be turned around. You would be shocked to see what a physical transformation can do, because what happens is the tenants feel more ownership, right? Like, when they live in a place that's clean and is up to date and everything works and you don't have a broken window and you've got a nice playground, like, that changes a mindset, right? And it starts the dominoes that address some of the other problems in the community. So we're very excited to get started and working with you all to make this transformation happen.
Thank you.
You started stating of the broken window theory?
I go back and forth on it, yeah. Because I think what we've seen, I've seen cases where it does and doesn't work, you know. I think it becomes a...
You gotta try it, though.
Yeah. I think it's got, demographics play a big part, location plays a big part, you know? But, and the other side of this too, I mean, and, you know, I don't know the full roster of residents at Jersey and how long they've been there, but, you know, some of our renovations we do, I mean, we're dealing with folks who have lived there since the properties were built, right? And, you know, it's a very powerful thing, especially with, you know, adding units that are accessible and that sort of thing. I mean, we've run into countless residents who, like, they haven't been able to go upstairs in their unit for, you know, 20 years, right? Because they qualify for disability and, you know, doing that renovation and putting them in a ground-floor unit with ramps and that sort of thing, it's a very meaningful thing for people to feel like they can live and inhabit their space, so.
For those that don't know, the broken window theory goes back to a criminologist, noted criminologist that says if you have a broken window, you need to fix that broken window as soon as you possibly can, because if you don't fix that broken window, the next one beside it's going to be broken, and then you got other stuff, right, officers? Correct. Yeah.
Chase, I will tell you, from the meetings that I had, there are some people that have, that are living in Jersey Park, that have been out there for 30 years. That was an eye-opener for me.
Yeah.
We know.
Any other, any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you all. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
See you well.
Number two is a strategic plan input presentation from Tammy.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. This is just a quick video that we put together. We had this idea of using the strategic priorities that council created and using National Night Out as a great platform to kind of solicit feedback from our residents. And so we'll be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
We have some fun activities this year for National Night Out. We have created three carnival games for residents to play to help solicit informative commentary on the strategic priorities developed by town council. Each game allows residents to vocalize which priority is important to them. We have our Distruck, featuring food, senior services, adult services, and attracting business. Our second game, Ring Toss, allows residents to choose among planning expansion, readiness for growth, and affordable housing. Finally, our Pig Toss, features master plan for the sports complex, stormwater plan for Windsor Castle, dam action plan, and Pinewood Industrial Park. While also providing a comic card where residents can elaborate on the importance of each priority, describe what this priority looks like for them, or even provide ideas on how or what we can do better to achieve these priorities. The sky is the limit. We'll have a couple extra games for the kids to play, along with some Pig Tastic giveaways. Please continue to help us spread the word about this great event and encourage everyone to stop by, play a little Pig Toss while providing some valuable insight into the priorities for the town of Smithfield. We have some fun activities this year for National Night Out.
Any comments?
I'll just provide a little background. Tammy and Mark were at a conference and came back and showed me a video from an event that Williamsburg did that was of this, you know, on a little bit bigger scale as they were doing their comprehensive plan, strategic planning work. And so I, you know, they asked if they could run with it, and I said, run with it. So, you know, creative ways to get people to provide input that isn't the typical process that normally doesn't garner that much input. So we figured we'd give it a shot at a time where there was already going to be a gathering of people and see how it goes, and maybe it's something that we expand on as we continue to try to find new creative ways to get input from the public. So hopefully everybody comes out and enjoys the fun, and, you know, I appreciate the staff for putting the effort into it, because they took it and made it their own.
I was in Tammy's office a couple days after she got back, and she was, you could just tell you, you were excited about it. You really, you really did a good job. And National Night Out is a perfect place to put it, so, you know, good job on putting this together.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing it in our National Night Out.
Thank you.
And Mike, it's a good plug to remind everybody, National Night Out, the first Tuesday in October, so our council meeting is on Wednesday in October, the first Wednesday, just as a reminder.
Any more comments to Tammy? Number three is a public hearing disposition of publicly held real property Crescent Drive. Michael, town manager?
Actually, this is going to be a, this one is with Mr. Cook, who approached council about purchasing a piece of the property that we own that's there next to one of our pump stations. Council has reviewed this, and we've gone through the process with our staff to make sure everything is inappropriate and works with our plans for the future use of that property. So this will just be the public hearing for the purchase of that little sliver of property.
Any questions? The next public hearing is the vacated right-of-way known as Moore Avenue.
Yes, thank, thank you. This is just a housekeeping item. Back in 2002, a town council actually approved the vacation of this right-of-way. There was an issue where we needed a little bit of a larger easement, and for some reason, it never got recorded. So what we have is we have a new, a new plat that vacates this right-of-way, and it also provides a 35-foot drainage and utility easement through the center. The vacated right-of-way would be deeded equally to the abutting property owners. And then I also included the previous staff report from 2002.
Any questions? If not, the next public hearing is an amendment and revision of Smithfield zoning ordinance.
Yes, thank you. At the Tuesday, June 11th Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the following potential regulations for donation boxes. These were favorably recommended to town council. We do have an amendment to Article 13, which would include the definition of a donation box, which would be any container, storage unit, or unoccupied structure other than an accessory building or structure that is located outside of a building intended or used for the holding of charitable or for-profit donation items by the general public, including but not limited to clothes, shoes, household items, toys, books, newspapers, with the collection of the donated items made at a later date or time. This term shall not include solid waste facilities, recycling bins, or similar receptacles. We also have the addition of Section 18 to Article 2, Section P, and that provides the regulations for the donation boxes. They shall not be allowed in any residential or agricultural zoning district except on properties where a special use permit exists for places of religious worship or assembly. They're permitted only on properties that contain a primary permitted use. They are limited to three per location. They are subject to the issuance of a zoning permit and written authorization of the property owner. They shall not obstruct any pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, not located in right-of-ways, setbacks, landscaped areas, required parking spaces, fire lanes, loading zones, buffers, or any other location that may cause a hazardous condition, a threat to the public safety, or create detrimental to surrounding land uses. The planning commission also wanted to add, the fire department should review the proposed placement. Donation drop-off box is not located closer than 100 feet from a residential district. They need to have a firmly closing lid and not be in capacity of greater than four cubic yards. They cannot exceed seven feet in height. Constructed of painted metal, plastic, suitable material, properly maintained in a safe and good substantial condition with a neat and tidy appearance. Clearly marked to identify the items and materials with contact information. Occupation of the parking spaces shall not reduce the number of available parking spaces below the minimum required. They must be collected and stored in the donation drop-off box, not left outside. If unable to comply with any of the above regulations, the applicant has the ability to apply for a special use permit for the proposed donation box and location. They shall be placed against buildings, fences, and shrubbery so as to not interfere with traffic. What I also included in the attachments are the identified donation boxes that we have currently within town. You will notice that there's two that actually meet, that meet these definitions that the planning commission has provided us. Thank you.
Randy?
Quick question. I can't remember. Did we decide that the existing donation boxes would be grandfathered, or they would have to come into compliance? Or do we even make that recommendation, planning commission?
There was not a recommendation made, but I will defer to Mr. Ridley, because I believe he said that we had the ability to enforce this, that it wasn't a use, that we could make them remove the donation boxes.
So any, if this is approved, then those that are not in compliance will have to come into compliance?
That is correct, or apply for a special use permit.
The thought process on this, guys, if you guys remember where the, the DAV, I believe it is, the thrift store that's beside Food Line, their boxes were kind of our model. They have them outside the door. They're clean, they're kept up, they're easily accessible. That was kind of the thought process. And that's where we actually came up with the four yards, and we measured them to make sure that our rules match what theirs were. There are several that we were not thrilled about. There's one by the Taco Bell, there's two, I think, in the parking lot, there's, there's one by the Supreme. They just didn't really match the historic overlay district. We understand the need for donation boxes. We understand how important they are and for the community, but we want them to look nice still. And so if you take that DAV one and you model that, they do a really nice job. I mean, on occasion, you'll see, you know, somebody left some bags out there overnight, but they're always cleaned up very quickly, and that's what we were shooting for. So that's kind of where all this language, and there's a lot of language in this.
Yeah, it is.
But it was pretty well thought out by planning commission when we made the recommendation to council, so. Just, I want to give you that background piece on it.
Just one question. There is a, I would not necessarily call it a donation box, but a deposit box beside the American Legion that is utilized to place tattered, unserviceable American flags in there. Are we okay with that, or do we need to do anything? Because if we're going down to A, I want to make sure we cover everything, and it's, what it is, it's an old post office box, exactly what it is, the old timing one that you, you know, just drop in and whatever, and that's where people put them prior to the American Legion having their service once a year, twice a year, to dispose of these flags on appropriate protocol. So if we can, I don't know, if we need to do anything, if we're opening up a can of worms, don't do it, but if we do, if it's a, it is a box, it is ancillary to the side... side of the building, exempt, do whatever, I, I don't know, but it's not really obtrusive, but I just want to make sure that if we're going down this path, we don't forget that one box that is very near and dear to, I think, a lot of folks' hearts.
The way that we define it is either charitable or for-profit donations. It's my understanding that they would dispose of those properly, so it would fall more into like a reverse cycling.
If y'all think, if y'all think the wording is sufficient, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that if somebody didn't come up later on and say, well, what about that box, and I didn't cover their, no, we'll make sure that we do that one.
The, the Lions Club does a similar box for eyeglasses. Yes, sir. And, and we, we talked about that in some, and I believe that they were okay, so.
I don't believe in opening up hand doors box, we don't need that, just want to make sure it's covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so that I understand, we're voting, we're having a public hearing on this at the meeting on Tuesday night?
Correct. This is for a text amendment.
Oh, okay.
This would be adding the donation box section. Right now, we do not regulate them.
Oh, okay. So after this public hearing, we will take action next meeting?
We'll have a public hearing. We'll have a public hearing on Tuesday, and, and we can take action that night if we choose.
Oh, okay. That, that includes that those locations that are not in compliance, that we take action, that they become in compliance?
No, ma'am.
No.
We, we would now have an ordinance to regulate them, and then we would ask planning to go back and, and bring these into order.
Okay, so planning would do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next public hearing is a special use permit, 1807 South Church Street?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the classification of an active fitness facility. This would be an indoor commercial recreational facility in accordance with 3IC6. The proposed use is a fit body boot camp franchise with approximately two to six employees and an average of 20 clients per session. They indicated they would be open between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 7:30 a.m., and then 5:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. For clarification, the Planning Commission had favorably recommended this to town council with the hours of 5:00 a.m. through 7:30 p.m. The positives is this would bring additional recreational facilities within town limits. It is not, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I've had a lot of conversations with Tammy about this. Just a clarification on my behalf. The next thing on the agenda is limited access break requests. Town manager?
Yes, ma'am. This is part of the process for the Grange project. As you may recall, as part of that rezoning process in their traffic plan, they did call for a write-in off of the bypass into their project. Now, I did misspeak in my cover memo where I said a write-in, write-out. The write-out was not part of the rezoning approval process. So what you have in your package showing that write-in to the project off of the bypass is what was part of their traffic plan when the rezoning was approved. So nothing there has changed. But in order for them to move forward with the request from the Commonwealth Transportation Board to get the limited access break, they do have to have a resolution from us so that they can carry that forward. Again, this would just be to support them in requesting the access break from the Commonwealth Transportation Board. All the cost, all of everything associated that, with that would still be on the developer, but BDOT does require a resolution from the locality requesting that they consider the application. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Again, if not, this is what was included with their rezoning application as part of their traffic plan.
Number eight, legislative priorities, funding for bike trail slash widening project.
Yes, ma'am. Included in the packet was a letter we received from Senator Jordan. She asked if the town had any legislative priorities for her to carry forward in the next General Assembly session. The one that was identified is funding for the South Church Street road widening and bike trail project. So that would be one thing we will ask her to help advocate for, but this was a point in time for council to discuss any other items that you may feel we need to request her assistance with as the next session comes about.
And for what it's worth, I, I asked Michael to put that on the agenda. We've been kind of trying our best to try to figure out the mechanics of how to get the, the three lanes from Smithfield Station Bridge to Town Bank, including with the multi-use, multipurpose pathway, and I think that this might be a, a good way to start. If we don't ask, we're not going to get it. That's basically it. I have had some discussion, been to Richmond and talked to Senator Jordan about it. I have talked somewhat to the Deputy Secretary of Transportation about it. There are some funding mechanisms that are out there, may require some type of match. Michael can probably tell better about that, but if we don't ask, we're not going to get it. So I thought this would be a good way, if nothing else, to get it out on the table, for sure, and we've worked kind of hard to see if we can push it across the line. If we don't try, we're not going to get it. So that's, that was my idea behind that, for what it's worth.
When are they back in session?
Um, they always come into session, I think, about the 10th of January, and I don't know whether this is a 45 or 60-day. Do you, do you remember?
This is a 60.
It's a 60-day?
I think this is a long one.
This is a long one. This is a long marathon. I love them, anyway. But, yep.
And we, we actually had our engineers that are working on this, they put together a brochure for us, like a pamphlet, so as we go to ask for funding assistance, we actually have a document about the project that we can hand out.
Very well done. Kimberly, Kimberly, want to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And I, I had a couple of those out when I was at Richmond.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I don't recall Senator, I have a hard time referring to her as Jordan, I feel it's more familiar as Brewer. I, I don't recall any of our legislators ever reaching out to us before, you know, asking what our priorities are. And I appreciate that happening, but can you make sure that you record this so every session, we can give them our priorities? You know, and, and I'm hoping that this comes to fruition, is that I like to see South Church Street improved to include the multipurpose trail.
I think she did last year. I, I may be mistaken, but I thought that I may-
This is the first time I recall getting a letter from her.
Yeah, the letter came, it came to me, I think, and I passed it on to Michael, and so, um, did y'all, did y'all, got a chance not to throw Michael under the bus? Did y'all get a copy of the letter?
In the packet.
Oh, Michael sent it to us in the packet, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but again, we got to, what, October 25th or something?
Right.
I can't, I can't remember. What'd you say?
And maybe what they don't fund, maybe there's some grants out there.
October 11.
October 11, okay. But, but my point being, if y'all come up with something else that you think, that you want from the Commonwealth of Virginia, please let, let Michael know.
So what we will do is we will have a legislative agenda developed for the October council meeting for you to actually vote on. She's asking that we have one officially adopted by the 11. And so if there's other items that we need to have discussion around, we can do that at September committees, and if not, we'll have this item on there.
Is there anything else that falls under the Public Buildings and Welfare Committee?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're on Parks and Recreation Committee now. That would be Councilmembers Gibbs, Butler, and Brooks. Chairman Gibbs?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilwoman Gibbs. Good afternoon, town council. I'm here today to request fee structural changes for our event venue properties, the Smithfield Center and the Manor House. What we have is two beautiful venues, and people sometimes try to opt for other days of the week besides Saturday to get a less expensive price, but it's the same venue. So to, um, we, we try to push the two-day rentals at both venues, but sometimes people want to get a Sunday or a Monday, what have you, so what I'm suggesting is that we make each weekday the same price, so all weekend dates are the same price at the Smithfield Center and at the Manor House. Every day of the week is the same price, because we only rent the Manor House out once a week to preserve the venue, because it's a historic venue. And at the Smithfield Center, like I said before, we try to rent it out as a weekend package for the benefit of the client, as well as wear and tear on the venue to prevent that. Do you have any questions for me about the fee changes?
Have one.
Yes, sir.
Coffee service, $1 per person per day. Coffee and soda service, $1.50 per person per day. You're too cheap. You need to be about $6.
Wow, okay.
Seriously. Like, sodas are expensive.
They are.
And let's just pretend you had no cost, you're making a dollar per person on coffee.
Yes.
That's, you do have cost, so I would recommend those changes, otherwise, you're good. Sorry. That's the song, I saw it. Dollar per person for coffee, golly.
Out of order.
Real quickly, I'd like to show you our new website for the event venues, if it'll come up for us. So previously, I had different websites for every venue we have. That was the Manor House, Smithfield Center, Windsor Castle Park, and Luder Sports. So I'm in the process of making one site for the event venues, which is done now, and then now working on the Smithfield Parks website, which will house all of our park properties under one place. So all the old sites route to this, and then you can go inside either button and learn more about that property. But this gives us the ability, so if the Smithfield Center is not available and the Manor House will work, we can shift them over to that property and vice versa.
Nice.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just want to take this opportunity to thank you for maximizing the, the use of the building at the same time, taking into consideration preservation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It was a wild ride for a couple years. Before COVID, we would do an event every day, so we'd have Thursday wedding, Friday wedding, Saturday wedding, and Sunday wedding, and it was hard on the venue staff, and the clients felt the push to move on and let us get the next one in here, so we're working in a different direction now where it's better for everyone.
Any other questions? Anything else?
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
Can we get a status update on the concession stand?
Yes, ma'am. They are, they have it totally blocked up. Has the second floor gone up yet?
Is what?
They have it brick almost all the way up on the first floor.
Okay.
Saw yesterday.
They put the cross beams on the second floor today.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yep. It's definitely, I, I think it'll be done by November, for sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions? Close parks and recs.
All right, let's see. That completes, other than additional items not on committee, but will be on the agenda, and that is approval of summary minutes, town council, and a proclamation for National Night Out. You need to sign that ahead of time, chief, or are we going, you go present it? How, how do you want to do that logistically?
It's, we'll be good, because if we adopt it Tuesday night, we're a month ahead.
Good deal.
Yes, sir.
Good deal, looking forward to it. Anything else to come for Town Council Committee? Meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.